I'd like to call to order the Norton School Committee meeting for Thursday, November 12th, 2020. This meeting is being recorded, so welcome, everybody. Looks like we have a full list and we're starting off with a lot of approval of minutes. So, Dr. Bayetta, do we do each one separately?
Yes, please.
Okay. So, I hope that everybody will be able... I do have them. I'm ready.
The issue is that each of you have different votes on these?
Yep, I have it all set.
Well, I've separated them out into who was here when, so if you can tell, I can make motions based on who was here.
I think I have it, Dines. If I'm wrong, if it doesn't match yours, then correct me. But Terry was very kind to put those into order for us. So, are we ready? Let's see. So, we are going to start with the vote to approve the minutes. So, a motion to approve minutes of March 4th, 2020, open meeting.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
So, I will abstain from this vote, Dines. It looks like you also. So, call to vote Kathleen Stern.
Yes.
Sherri Cohen.
Yes.
Dan Shidi.
Yes.
I abstain, and Dines Navas.
I abstain.
Thanks. We'll move to the motion to approve the minutes of June 25th, 2020. Is there a motion? Thank you. Second?
Here's where, can I interrupt?
Yep.
I would actually make a motion to approve the minutes of June 25th, open meeting, July 20th, open meeting, July 23rd, open meeting, with select board and executive session meeting, July 29th, executive session meeting, August 5th, open meeting, August 6th, open 4th, open meeting and executive session meeting, August 27th, open meeting and executive session meeting, and October 29th, open meeting, all as written.
Okay.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Let's see. Kathleen?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Dines?
Yes.
Sherri?
Yes.
And I will say yes. So...
August 4th?
How does that work, Dines, for the meetings that people have to...
So now, I would make a motion to approve the August 4th, open meeting, and September 3rd, open meetings, minutes as written. Kathleen was not there for either of those.
So Kathleen, so we'll just do the ones where people were absent. We'll do those separate?
Yeah, there's gonna be only this motion and then one more motion. That'll cover all the meetings.
September 17th, Dan wasn't there. September...
So, September 17th, neither Dan or Kathleen was there?
Yep.
The motion that was made for the August 4th and the September 3rd meetings, only Kathleen was not there. So she'll abstain from that. We can vote on that as a group with her abstaining.
Okay. So, is there a motion to approve the minutes of August 4th and September 3rd, open meeting?
We just need a second. I made the motion. You just need a second.
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 All in favor? Sherri?
Yes.
Dines?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Kathleen?
Abstain.
And Carolyn's a yes. And do we do the same for the meeting that Dan wasn't?
Right, there's just one more meeting. I'll make the motion to approve the September 17th, 2020, open meeting and executive session meeting, minutes as written.
Is there a second?
Sherri, you're gonna have to say...
So, was Kathleen not at the open meeting? Because it just says Dan.
I have her as not there for that either.
I have Dan and Kathleen absent for the 17th.
Okay.
I have Dan absent for the 17th. Sorry, let me go back. I have Dan absent for the open meeting and for the executive session meeting. We have Kathleen absent for executive session meeting only.
Right.
So, do you want to do it a separate motion?
All right, so we'll break them then. Okay, so I would make a motion to approve the September 17th, open meeting minutes as written.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Let's see. Sherri?
Yes.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Dines?
Yes.
Dan?
Abstain.
And I am a yes.
Madam Chair, I make a motion to approve the September 17th, executive session meeting minutes as written.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Sherri?
Yes.
Dines?
Yes.
Kathleen?
Abstain.
Dan?
Abstain.
And I am a yes. So that covers all of them?
That's correct.
Looks good. Okay. Perfect. Thank you. We'll move on to the warrants. Sherri?
All right, there's a list of these too. Dines, do you have a shortcut for me? All right, I have reviewed and approved the following warrants: June 10th, 2020, $151,588.75; June 25th, 2020, $248,258.75; July 16th, 2020, $517,326.22; July 29th, 2020, $188,731.95; August 12th, 2020, $537,261.14; September 2nd, 2020, $354,318.97; September 14th, 2020, $450,046.43; October 30th, 2020, $592,371.24; and then school payroll warrant, October 22nd, 2020, $993,544.23. I wish to enter them into public record.
Thanks, Sherri.
I just ask, we didn't receive most of those in our packet, right? We only received the last two. Is that right?
Should have received them all. Does anybody else have that problem?
I didn't.
That must be a copy. I'll make sure you get a packet. We'll email it to you.
Don't worry about it. It's fine. I just...
Can I say something? It's Terry. They were with all the minutes that you received in that notebook?
Oh, so they were in the last packet. Okay.
Yes, they were. Sorry.
Thanks, Terry.
Yep.
We're gonna move on. So Zoe and Malia, welcome. We'd love to get a student update.
Okay, so we're gonna start with the JCS. So, Mrs. Fulton told us that due to COVID, teachers planned fall-themed activities instead of having Halloween celebrations so they could still have fun. The SPO provided an ice cream treat for all students. Thank you to the SPO. Many classrooms learned about the election process and even had their own elections on various topics. So kindergarten students voted for their favorite animal, and second grade students voted for Duck or Farmer Ben, characters in the book Duck for President.
The LGN, they were mostly based on the Halloween situation stuff, but the PTC provided a sweet treat on Halloween from Chartwell's, and it was distributed during lunch, and they also got to listen to Halloween music, so everyone was pretty excited for that. And everyone was very grateful for what the PTC did for them.
So, for the yell, I really like this approach. Mr. Gigan actually interviewed kids, so he talked to them and said, like, asked what they liked, what they were having fun with. So he interviewed a group of fourth graders, and he said that they loved their teachers and they love learning new things. They said that they love in-person best because they said that they can learn best that way, and that they love being in school with their friends so they can learn safely together. And he said that they also really like their principal, but that might just be because he was asking. He said that next time, he will come to us with some ideas from the fifth graders. So I really like the idea of interviewing the kids individually.
From the middle school, they had a whole lot of stuff going on. They're actually doing this thing called Snapchecks, where it demonstrates, it's whenever someone demonstrates good citizenship, they get a Snapcheck, and they, every time that they meet a certain threshold, they reveal letters on a Wheel of Fortune-style phrase bulletin board. And once the phrase was completely uncovered, the entire student body got a reward, and they actually just got to celebrate their rewards. So they went outside and got to listen to music, they got to kick around soccer balls, and socialize with their friends, and everything was socially distanced, which was good. The Halloween costume contest, that's a big tradition for NMS, and I remember that was one of my favorites going there, but they still got to do that even with COVID happening. So, that was very fun, and the NMS parent board helped supply all the prizes. And they're excited for in November, having a pink week to celebrate breast cancer awareness. I'll just move right on to part of the high school, what's happening. Ninth grade just had their class elections. Science Honor Society is actually able to build gardens now because they didn't get to do it in the spring, so that's pretty exciting for them. Student Council is doing a Spirit Week, and everyone's very excited for that because we're actually turning it into a class competition. So we're hoping to get more participants this time, but that'll be very fun for everyone. And overall, just something that I noticed, definitely see like a limit in like the school time, which is kinda obvious, but I think that limited school time, like in-school time, we're not like having those fun days, but I think the teachers are really trying to like incorporate those fun days that we used to have all the time, like, or not all the time, but whenever you need like a break day, we used to have just, okay, let's just watch a movie for the day. I think we like don't have those anymore, so I'm kinda excited once we can go back to school a little bit more, so more in-person time. I'm excited.
So, in addition to what she said about the high schools, so other than the Science Honor Society, other Honor Societies are starting to slowly come back, and they're going to have their modified ceremony of, you know, induction soon, which is nice. Many clubs have begun to meet virtually finally, such as book groups, debate club, Lancer Times, QuizBowl, and DECA, along with many others, many new ones. And the Kindness Club has created a wall of appreciation for all of the students. Every student has a turkey with their name on it and on a glass wall in the cafeteria, and they said because we are thankful for our students. That is high school.
Thanks, Zoe. Thanks, Malia. It's really great to get an update, see how things are going. So we appreciate it. Any comments or questions?
Madam Chair, through you. Hey, Malia, how about an update on contest stuff that's going on? You know anything about something going on?
I think you're muted.
Do you want to bring us up to date on some contests and stuff, some performance things that are taking place at Norton High School that you may know about?
Sure. So recently, we recently had the Norton Youth Lions Speech Competition. I participated alongside Abby Leo, who we're both going through to the next round, which I think is Zone 5. So we're gonna both be continuing on, and that's very exciting that we still get to be able to do that because I remember hearing about it last year, and once I heard about, you know, the whole Corona deal, I was kinda thinking it would be canceled, but it's not, and we're really excited about it.
Congratulations to you and Abby.
Thank you.
That's great. Good luck.
Thank you.
So thank you again, Zoe and Malia. Let's see, we're going to move to our technology presentation by Christina Schillingo, our Digital Learning Specialist, and Karen Winsper, our Director of Instructional Technology. So, I will turn it over to you both.
So, this is going to be more of an update than a presentation. We're really just trying to give you a sense of where we stand today, two months into the school year. The summer, obviously, we've had some conversations about the one-to-one program and how we were able to distribute devices to all of the students across the district, pre-K to 12 who needed them or wanted them. We do have some students who chose to go the BYOD route, but definitely, we handed out over 1,500 devices before the start of school. One thing that we launched this year that we have found to be a little overwhelming, although we're getting the hang of it, are the parent requests for tech support. One thing, both students, parents, staff can use the new Incident IQ and put in a tech request if they're having trouble with Internet, or, you know, we get a lot of devices that have microphone or camera issues, or if there was an accidental damage. And we were pulling some data, and based from July 1st to today, we've had about 745 total requests. And last year, during the same time period, we had 464 requests. So, a few more this year than last. You know, we have launched a lot of software programs this year, you know, with the CARES funds. One in particular is ClassLink, which is a single sign-on. We felt that, based on feedback we had gotten from parents, it was challenging during both, you know, hybrid and remote, or certainly in the emergency teaching in the spring, we had some challenges for our youngest students with usernames and passwords. So, having a single sign-on really made a difference. It definitely is an adjustment for a lot of our staff, though, simply because the way that they had always done business, you know, through Google Classroom directly, now we're trying to have them go through ClassLink. But it definitely, I think, in time, will provide us with better opportunities for our students to quickly and efficiently access programs. We also have been providing Internet access through hotspots and Comcast sponsorships to families in need. We definitely have devices after reaching out to a lot of the families who had expressed interest over the summer. I'll be sending another round out. But we have probably over 25 right now that we are taking care of, and that is through Verizon, we were able to get hotspots with unlimited data. And our sponsorships for families with more than one child, we're doing through Comcast, so that has worked out well. The best part of this year has been the addition of Christina in our Digital Learning Specialist role. I will say it has been a position that I have been advocating for some time, and through the support of Dr. Bayetta and the school committee, we were able to have Christina join us. Some of you might know Christina. Maybe your children had her as a teacher. She's a veteran middle school teacher, but now she has joined the Technology Department. So I'm gonna have her update you on some of the things that she has been working on through the tech office with staff. So welcome, Christina.
Thank you. Thank you so much for letting me come speak tonight about so many of the great things that are happening at Norton Public Schools specific to instructional technology. So just to start off, just in the two and a half months in stepping into this new role, I've been able to work with a wide variety of staff from literally all grade levels, from pre-K to grade 12, and that includes paraprofessionals. I've worked with academic coordinators. I've worked with the other instructional coaches in district, classroom teachers, administrative staff, and specialists. So kinda running the gamut here, which has been awesome. And probably the most amazing thing that I've seen is that staff are just feeling a lot more confident in their instructional technology skills and knowledge. And as a result of that increased confidence, they're so much more willing to try new digital tools like Jamboard, which is Google's sort of like virtual or digital whiteboard, and Paradec, which allows for like interactive presentations, especially interactive Google Slides. And evidence of this increased confidence includes staff that are not only willing to try these new tools in the classroom, but who are willing to share what they're working on, what's working well, their creative ideas with me, and also with their fellow educators. So for example, just in the last couple of weeks, two educators in particular from Norton High School have actually shared with me videos that they've made of interesting, cool digital tools that they're using that they want me to feature in my kind of weekly tech newsletter that I call Light Bites, after a light bright toy. So, one educator in particular focused on how she organizes her Google Classroom for maximum efficiency, and the other on creating digital stickers or badges for student feedback. And just a quick note, that staff are leveraging digital tools first and foremost to meet their students' needs. And they're also modeling risk-taking, creativity, and flexibility with and for their students. So I've worked with ELL students to utilize the accessibility features on their Chromebooks, worked with preschoolers, preschool staff on introducing them to CSO, which is our digital learning or digital portfolio platform, and working with middle school and high school staff on how to best structure and organize Google Classroom at the middle school and high school level. So with all of this in mind, and all of this newness, and all of these challenges, educators have kind of been rolling with all the updates and been receptive to things like breakout rooms and polling, which are pretty new to Google Meet and Zoom. And I think having those 10 days of professional development at the beginning of the year really gave us a foundation to build upon, which has been awesome. And another thing that we've been working on as a district is sort of looking at, I don't wanna call them old tools because they're not really that old, but looking at tools that we've used before, like Google Classroom, but using them in this new way. So yes, we use Google Classroom pre-pandemic, pre-COVID, pre-hybrid teaching, but we never used Google Classroom for hybrid teaching before, or CSO for hybrid teaching before. So staff have been really receptive to adjusting sort of these old tools to the new ways that we're teaching and learning right now. And we're definitely still focusing and on improving using technology to streamline content and communication. We had a really successful NPS Family Tech Night, all about Google Classroom back in September, and we're continuing to build and add resources for NPS families. Obviously, with all these successes and all these awesome things, it's not to say that there aren't challenges. Obviously, a huge challenge is that, you know, within the staff, we have a wide variety of needs and abilities, and we as a tech department have tried really, really hard to meet all those needs, and by providing a mix of sort of on-demand and live support. So we built up an NPS Instructional Technology website, and also an NPS Tech YouTube channel that I just checked today. It has over 60 videos. So we're building that slowly but surely. And the emphasis is on creating these sort of bite-sized, smaller videos that staff can access whenever they need to find what they're looking for really quickly and really easily. And none of this would be possible, obviously, without the support of the entire tech department, including our awesome teacher-technology liaisons at every building.
Yes, thank you, Christina. If you have any questions for either of us, please feel free.
So, I think maybe the obvious question is, clearly, right now, we're focused on getting our situation to work in, you know, in the world that we're in right now. Have you guys thought about, or do you see any crossover between what we're doing now and what we're being forced to do versus, you know, sometime when we actually are going back to a full-time, everybody's in school, you know, how do you perceive or how do you see this technology helping us in a normal world? Do the "normal"?
Well, in a normal or typical, we were mostly one-to-one anyway, right? So I would say that having Christina in her position, combined with myself, being able to touch base with teachers and all students, perhaps going into classrooms and being able to model lessons. I had done that at some point several years ago, started it with different teachers, but I know that Christina would be more than willing to do that as well. And I feel as though some of our staff, and Christina, you can jump in and correct me if I'm wrong, but I think some of our staff do need some hand-holding and do appreciate having that extra person in the classroom. And even if it's just, you know, to run a center while they're doing something else. So I feel like the access to devices is going to continue to expand the way that people are meaningfully using them with their students. I feel as though, you know, we always think about the curriculum, what are our instructional goals, and then using the technology to support those goals. It's not like an extra add-on. I mean, we're using them out of necessity right now to stay connected. But I think we need to look to the next step, you know? How can we utilize the technology to be more innovative, to come up with more creative ways for projects and engaging students? So I hope that answers your question.
Yes, and I guess if it gets, the next question is, what is the next step? You know, what's the next step? What's the right step to kind of grow this facet of the Norton School District? Because this is, listen, the reality is, I mean, technology's not going away, right? It's only gonna, it's gonna exponentially get bigger and bigger. So there has to be, I think we have to have a comprehensive plan for tomorrow, for again, the airport, normal, you know, normal school days again.
So, Dines, to your question, if I may, Karen has had this in the budget for six fiscal years. That's how much of a priority it's been. And we had no choice this year because not having it for six years, I think, was one of the reasons why we ended up in some of the high-stress levels with some of our staff whose competency weren't there yet. It's not because they're not good teachers. They're great teachers. They're just not utilizing it on a day-to-day basis like others were. So what Christina has done, and done it really well, is exceptionally well, is to just bring a peer to the table who's not supervising them, but is providing them access to get better, and they're eating it up left and right. To the point, or to the recommendation of your question, we need another. We need at least another one person. The best scenario would be one person in every building. In Norton, that's probably not gonna happen. But if we could split the job into a secondary and elementary, we would be in better shape. I can't hear you.
This is, do we need to hire more people for this?
Yeah, we have to because the fact of the matter is, there's two things happening in technology. The first thing is always trying to play catch-up because the money wasn't there in the past or because it wasn't a priority, or because we just had to make, as you always say, decisions that hurt our own, right? Lousy decisions. The future is grounded in more technology in the classroom. And would kids come back full-time, and eventually they will, they're gonna wanna see technology be a balance of their classroom, much more so than it was prior to leaving. So, and one of the things that we're learning is, in some instances, when you get to the level of proficiency and exemplary in the use of technology in the classroom, and I'm talking, I'm at 35,000 feet with this. I'm not on the grounds like Karen and Christina are and others, is what you see is that people become creative in their approach to teaching and learning. And so, that moves us as a district. You know, it makes me like really say, how can I find a priority of making sure that if there's a retirement in the future and we have good class sizes and we don't need another teacher, then I'm gonna say bingo, that's the position I'm going for. And because I think if we could have that team approach, again, even if we started with the simple for the next two to three years of a pre-K to five person and a six to 12 person, what that would allow is to automatically quadruple the time that folks like Christina are able to spend with the staff, and target the areas of improvement, the areas of support, and the areas of enhancement, right? The people that are proficient and exemplary, they just want more. The people that are trying to get to proficient and exemplary, I always say to people, and I'll leave you with this thought. I've been saying since March, public education just got very public. It's been a phrase that I use all the time. It drives people crazy when I use it. But our teachers are worried that they're not as good as someone else across the hall. You know what? That's an awful place to feel like you're in. But professionally, I actually also think it's a great place to be in because that makes you wanna do and get better. And to me, that's what it's all about. As a superintendent, that's what I try to do. So, yes, we definitely need a plan that integrates another digital learning specialist into the district. And to be quite honest, we probably also need a technician down the road as well.
So, then I guess I'll follow up and say, sometimes it's hard to kind of see how the pieces all fit together over the years. And Joe, I'm gonna give you a little bit of props here. So, some people may not realize, the reason we actually were even in a position to be as successful as we've been is because, I don't know how many years, it must have been six years ago, Joe, you came forward and said, hey, you guys should consider school choice. And we did, and we took that money, and the first thing we did with it, and I don't think I'm wrong, I could be wrong, but I don't think I am, first thing we did with it was go out and get Chromebooks and start this program. And we built it up over the years, and we built up our school choice over the years so that we could continue that, you know, that build-out and become a one-to-one. so that we could continue that, you know, that build-out and become a one-to-one district. So Joe, I'll tell you something, I'm going to say something right now, and you probably are going to be shocked to hear me say it. But I would encourage us to continue to grow out the school choice, and I will actually vote yes to use school choice money for operational expenses if they go towards technology and the build-out of technology. And you know, I'm no on operational expenses for school choice because I think it's a bad move. That's the one area I would say, I think that we should, we should do as much as we can.
And I, Dinesh, I appreciate you saying that because I think one of the things that's come to the forefront that we need to utilize is things like instructional technology is an area that is not going to go away at all, number one. Number two, my team is running ragged. I mean, they are, everybody's running ragged. But you've got to remember, you've got two technicians, a network administrator, and Karen and now Christina, and each of them has a different role. And their, and school choice money, you know, this year, 163 students. I'm going to pay for 2,300 students to have Chromebooks or iPads. Think about that for a second. Some of our neighbors are still waiting for their Chromebook order. We were able to do it right away. So I appreciate that comment and we'll definitely make sure that that's part of our plan going forward. I also just wanted to just end with a quick comment.
Joe, you're muted.
Right. Christina not only hasn't been a great asset, you know, I can speak as a parent of a child who had her in school when she was a teacher. But I think the other part of it that's really important to know is like, every weekend, I'm waking up to an email that's going out to the entire staff about, you know, if you want to do this, here it is. And she's coming in literally an hour early every Monday morning to just spend time with teachers and administrators and support staff who just want to check in with her before the workday starts or as the workday is getting underneath. So it's definitely going above and beyond, and we appreciate it very much. And if we had that and times it by two, then everybody would be doing just a little bit more because they'd have a little bit more time to be able to do it. So Christina, thank you.
Thank you.
I just have one quick maybe thought slash suggestion. Would it be possible to see like what some of the teachers are using our technology for? Like if some teacher kind of goes out on a limb and says, this is what I've been using, I don't know if you guys incorporate that or share that information? I know a couple of years ago, we got something at the Yale that was something that was incorporated by a teacher. So maybe at some point, you know, if a teacher has something that really stands out, you know, we could kind of get a little presentation. I just like, would like to see the technology in place and see what our teacher's going after with it.
Absolutely, I think we can reach out to some maybe tech-savvy and not-so-tech-savvy teachers and see if they would be willing to share some of the great things that they're doing. Because everyone is doing more with technology than they were, you know, a year ago. Everyone is, so absolutely can do that, Dan.
Sure. Great, thank you.
So if I can just sort of, I think, kind of end on this note. I think, Karen, we've had multiple conversations about sort of technology in Norton Public Schools. And I think, given our limited resources, our limited financial resources, you, your team, sort of Norton Public Schools as in a sort of a school department, I think we have always strived to support technology the best way possible. Maybe not with the bodies that we needed, but certainly with the technology. And I think that when we were confronted with a pandemic, we were probably in a little bit of a better sort of place with technology than a lot of even our surrounding neighbor towns were. So I just want to sort of do a public thank you to you and to your team. I know it hasn't been easy and I know, you know, we have sat at many school committee meetings with, you know, this position and it has never come to fruition. So it's great to see that it's always been, I think, important to us, but it's really nice to see the value come really to fruition, that we really recognized the importance of it. And now we just sort of can see it in action. So, Michalingo, thank you for taking on the role and for doing such a great job. We really appreciate it.
I just wanted to add, I've had a chance to see CSO in action with my niece and nephew, and I just think it's fabulous. So many times they're learning something and they have no clue that they're learning, they're so enwrapped in a game or a challenge or whatever. I think it's a great program and I'm really proud that we've chosen that one to give to our students.
So I think, and just to jump on what Dan had said too, I think it'd be great to see, like Kathleen, you're lucky you get to see CSO. I don't get to see it because my kids are in high school. So any kind of like glimpse into some of these things that parents are talking about or even our teachers, I think would be helpful for us to see. And 100% stand with Dinesh, and this is a huge night, people. Anybody that's watching, for Dinesh to talk about school choice being used for technology, I mean, we've got to get this signed, sealed and delivered. But I 100%
Operational, sorry. Operational.
Yeah, exactly, right. I 100% agree. I mean, this is the, you know, sometimes you look for some of the good and some really bad situations. And I think that, you know, the technology coming to the forefront, I can't imagine being a teacher and having to learn this whole new hybrid model and then, oh yeah, here's a whole bunch of technology. You've got to figure out how to educate kids while using this. It's overwhelming and I'm really glad that the two of you are, you know, and your team are really running with this. But absolutely 100%, you need more. So I'm all in favor of that. Thank you. Thank you.
Thanks. We're going to move on. Dr. Bayetta, I'm going to turn it over to you for a discussion on the continuation of the hybrid model through December 23rd, 2020.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So this is a kind of a situation that came up that Dinesh reminded us to look into. And then Dan, I think, reached out as well. This is more of a procedural situation as you've decided to continue with the hybrid model, continue to collect data and information from us. But we did say at the August meeting that at the October 29th meeting, you potentially would be voting. So this is a procedural matter of voting to continue your decision from a week ago or two weeks ago to keep the hybrid through the 23rd of December.
Is there any comments or questions? Any comments or questions from any other members of our audience? Seeing none. So is there a motion to continue the hybrid model through December 23rd, 2020?
So before, actually, before we do that, can I ask, is that just a six-week period? Is that what we're doing is just adding six weeks on?
The discussion that we had at your last meeting was to take a look at providing you data right before Christmas, which the holiday break. So this would allow for us to have that meeting, but just continue on. And then we have the rest of the time to work on changes for January 4th, if that were to happen, of which you're going to be seeing a recommendation on that anyways.
So should we vote to stay in the hybrid model for longer so that it doesn't require another vote in late December?
I don't have a problem with that based upon what I'm seeing with the data. The changes that we're thinking of doing is what we're internally calling a phase-in process per a communication that you folks received from me and the administrative team has. And the phase-in is really about looking at our high-needs population in different phases. But I want to utilize our student data and our local data and regional data as we make those changes and upgrades. And as you know, from the if feasible versus practical discussion that we've had, until we change these six-feet rules or I guess knock down walls and make it bigger, we're in a kind of a situation with transportation and food services. We are trying everything to get more kids back to school on a regular basis. But it is a process that I think we have to utilize. So, I mean, going through at least two weeks after January 4th, which is the return date, makes a lot of sense to me because I'm concerned about that window when we return being a potential spike time.
I'm actually thinking not putting a closing date on it. And the rationale there would be, again, not because I don't think that we will indefinitely be in a hybrid model, simply so that we don't have to continuously vote on it. But I think at this point, we know why we're in it. We know that we essentially have to be in it because of the regulations, et cetera, like you just said. So rather than force us to come back and discuss it and vote on it, because it takes some time to do that. I'd rather leave it open-ended. We can always vote to come out of it. But this gets rid of the necessity for future votes continuously.
And I don't think the phase-in process for high-needs students or issues that we're going to try to address and eventually get to all students needs a vote of the school committee. It's, you know, we're predominantly still in the hybrid. It's just a matter of which students are we able to tackle as part of our plan.
Right.
So I'm all in favor of keeping it wide open.
How do people feel about that?
I agree, Dinesh. I think we just keep it ongoing until otherwise noted. I mean, it's, you know, listen, we're watching the numbers every week of what's going on. You know, we send that information out around to everybody. We're watching this, we're talking about it. I think we just keep hybrid ongoing until, until.
So we would need a motion to change that to a continuation of hybrid model ongoing until further decision by the Norton School Committee.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor. Let's see, Dinesh?
Yes.
Cherry?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Kathleen?
Yes.
And I'm yes.
Thank you.
So I'm getting a message on my computer, just so everybody knows. It says my internet is unstable. So if I drop off, Dinesh, you could maybe take over. So we will move to the Department of Secondary and Elementary Education reporting requirements. Dr. Bayetta?
Thank you. Just to let you know, you received a memo from me about the DESI Structured Learning Time Reporting Requirements. You have the actual report that we had to complete and it'll be released tomorrow to the Norton Public School staff and to yourself early in the morning. We, this is the beginning of the monitoring that the department wants to do in order to create equality and equity. We all know what I think about it, so we can all move on, I guess.
Okay.
Joe, I just have one question. Is this an ongoing assessment? Are they asking for this on a routine basis or is this a one-time request?
We believe it's going to be ongoing and I also believe it's going to be targeted. I think you're going to see questions about ELL that are more targeted, special education, severe programs. I think you're going to see more questions about your feasibility study in terms of that we already did. I think, again, this is local control, yet we're being questioned about some of the local control decisions. We continue to move forward, but we believe that using local data and information is the best way to do it and not a statewide initiative.
Thanks for that information. We will move to the announcement of the Class of 2021 Adams Scholarship Recipients. Dr. Bayetta?
So this is what it's all about, right, kids? So I just want to just go over the John and Abigail Adams Scholarship requirements. So basically, the students have to score a minimum score in one of the high school assessments in ELA Math or one of the sciences. And then a minimum score on the remaining two MCAS tests and then also be in the top 25% of their class. What's really, really important is the Class of 2021 has 48 seniors that are being recognized for receiving that scholarship. They get a letter. That letter can be placed in their file, if you will. They can then utilize it for the purposes of getting a tuition discount, that is tuition-only discount at the community colleges and state colleges and universities. What's, you know, one of the things that I really appreciate is that every year, our students do really, really well. We always have a really good set number of students based upon that 25 percentile plus getting all the other requirements that they need. So kudos to the Adams Scholarship Recipients of the Class of 2021. Hold on to that letter, it's really worth money, believe it or not. That letter has got a number value on it if you decide to use the community colleges or state college/university system. And should be proud and show it to your parents and your staff that works with these students from since preschool all the way up. They've all been part of supporting them and getting them there. So congratulations to them all.
Can I add, congratulations to them. And I also want to make sure that they know that that scholarship is good. I think it said six years. So if somebody does decide to take a gap year or something with everything going on, you still get that scholarship. So don't forget that.
Yes, that's a really, thank you Kathleen for saying that. It's really, really important to remember that, especially as there's a lot of gap year discussions going on right now with families or they're taking the semester off. You know, just remind yourself that you've got that six-year window. So if you decide not to use it, you know, next year because you're doing X, you can use it the following year. You just, you know, I always tell people, frame the original and put it in and hang it up somewhere in the house. So every time you go buy it, you know that's worth at least a thousand bucks, so.
Well, congratulations. I think it really is representational of how hard our students work to be successful academically, and we really appreciate it. So we will move on. The first reading of revised policies, Vinnie?
All right, thanks so much. So we are currently going through an educational stability desk review by the Department of Education. And part of that is related to McKinney-Bento and the foster care system. So as part of that process, we need to update our policies and procedures regarding educational opportunities for children experiencing homelessness are in foster care at this time or are children of military families. The changes there focus on registration requirements, what we can and cannot ask at the time of registration, communication with families and community providers in clearing what, making sure that folks that are experiencing homelessness and/or are part of a military family know what resources we have available as a district. And then also policies regarding training of staff and identifying coordinators for McKinney-Bento and foster care point person. All the policies that we have provided to you tonight were done through the Massachusetts School Committee Association. It's their most updated policies around those three areas. And they do meet all the DESI requirements. And if approved, will be part of the process for this desk review as we move forward.
Thanks, Vinnie. Was there any questions or comments on them?
So there's no vote tonight, Madam Chair, it's just the first reading. There'll be a vote at the next meeting.
My only comment is, it seems like outside of some of the stuff that was specific to the the situation a child might be in, most of it seemed like it would have been standard practice anyways, at least in our districts.
Yep, absolutely.
Right, it seemed pretty standard stuff, so.
Yeah, it just had to be updated to reflect the language that's required by the, by DESI at this time.
Sure.
Okay. Thanks, Vinnie. I guess we'll see you next month or our next meeting. And Dr. Bayetta, other topics?
Surprise, surprise, no other topics.
That's, that's a first, so.
I'm still overwhelmed with Dinesh's comment from earlier.
I just have one thing.
Kathleen, absolutely.
And I did the vote for, so I did the vote for Massachusetts School Committee. All of the resolutions passed, so that's one through nine. I can read them through or name of them if you want. But 10, number 10 was put on hold, looking for more information. So there was no vote on that. I also listened to the guest speaker who talked about equality and equity. And quite honestly, I learned quite a bit. So I'll be putting together something for you for the next meeting. It'll probably be in your packet if I get it there in time. I'll just email it to everyone, but it was, it was really important.
Kathleen, thanks for representing us at that meeting. We appreciate it. So any other questions, comments, any other information? So if I'm not, I'm not seeing any. Joe, if I'm not mistaken, we need to adjourn this meeting to enter executive session. Is that correct?
For the purposes of discussion on collective bargaining agreement with the Norton Teachers Association, and you will not be returning to the regular session.
Is there a motion to adjourn this school committee meeting to enter into executive session for purposes of collective bargaining and not returning to this school committee meeting?
So moved.
Second?
Again.
All in favor. So, Dinesh?
Yes.
Cherry?
Yes.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
And I am a yes. So, thanks. So, thanks, everybody, see you in a few minutes.
Yep.
Thank you.
Happy Thanksgiving to all.